Well, Beth has been looking at the YouTube videos and I've been seeing that 100-plus people have been checking in on the Select Board meetings. So I wanted to just say a welcome to all of our Canterbury neighbors, whether you're from the borough, or Sherwood Forest, or over the Oxbow, or maybe right around the center. We can't see you, but thanks for taking the time to watch the videos and the stream tonight, or find us on YouTube tomorrow. I'm amazed that some of our meetings really have been viewed over 100 times, one of them almost 200 times. So, I hope you're finding this helpful, and thanks again for listening. And that's the advertisement at the beginning.
Thank you, Beth. Ken, what do you want to do first?
Department heads.
Department heads, yep. Where it goes first thing?
What? Both the properties that had 2021 liens on them are both paid off, so you don't have to go forward with this year, which is how this is. Things are quiet and status quo until we get to late summer to get ready for elections.
Yeah. Questions from any board members?
Looks like the same old crowd.
Yeah. You've got a tax warrant in front of you tonight to sign, and then we'll put out bills starting Wednesday.
There you go.
I'm gonna get the tax warrant in one sec.
Okay.
And when do these next become issues?
The 2022 liens are gonna become issues in 2025.
And these 2023 ones then in 2026?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, cool. Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Chief Kamal, you want to start? Okay, good afternoon. Starting at the top, we're still running way above last year. The other date, it's been pretty active, 34% of the last year's total for emergency calls, so 168 the other day, and calls for emergency service. Over the last month since the last met, we had three fires. It's been the three fires, we were second to a structural fire in Lowndes. So provided a crew for them over there. We went to cover Concord, they had a fire and most of their community was out, so we covered the manor station for three or four hours one morning, and then we got a fire on Northwest Road. It was a grass fire, it was a brush fire, caused by power lines. So I work with Unithill, and they identified, I called them right away, they were pretty responsive, they came and took care of things. So we stopped it before we were gonna do any structures.
That wasn't during the storm or anything, just wired down?
No, just trees, braiding wires, and a couple of sparks, and things were dry, and yeah, it was.
Really? Thank you.
So can I ask you why is the number of incidents up from last year? So we haven't had a year.
So there's really, in our profession and those that have done it, there's really no rhyme or reason to that. You think you're gonna be busy and slow and vice versa, you know what I mean? So there's really, there's not one common denominator. Yeah, we had a couple of storms, but we have storms every year that add to the total, you know what I mean? So they're just regular, routine calls. We had a medical call last night down at the self-storage for chest pains, so we're not quite sure if it's somebody that was just unloading or loading, or if somebody's living here, so I'll be following up with that and talking to Joel who can eat that, doing the enforcement type deal. Has an issue on their belt, there was some people squatting in there, so that's a concern for all of us if that's going on. That's not uncommon for those facilities to have people.
Are there still people in there that are known, or?
Absolutely, wherever they build those facilities, in the city, and you saw that in the city, that it's cheaper than paying rent in the fire department, the use that they make do, but no same very facilities, no fire detection, obviously is a concern. So we'll be following up, it's huge nature of that call, it was last night, it was up in town, so.
So there's no real rhyme or reason, 34% up, but just?
Just, well, there's these calls, fires, medicals, accidents, motorcycle accident on 106 a couple days ago, so in Canterbury section of 106, so yeah. So under fire prevention, fire drills being done every month, inspections, assembly renewals are due this month, the airworks, the golf course, we've got those done. I'm working with Shaker Village, they're planning an event for, I don't have the date in front of me, June, they wanna bring a vendor in, so I have to do an assembly permit for that. I'm working with your staff, the in-town fireworks event on June, July 5th. By state law, we have to have a fire detail in place before they can bring material on site, until one hour after the fireworks are done, shut off, so I'm working on staffing that. And the elementary schools will be doing next week a total school evacuation drill for a situation at Lawrence, and it'll be evacuating down to the church, which is their pre-designated evacuation site, so I'm working with them on planning and we'll be debris clearing and blocking traffic and all that stuff, so.
What day is that, please?
Next Wednesday, I believe it is. Out of my head. I'm a membership, very active members, two members are just graduating with their EMT license, one member is going to paramedic school, and two members just graduated Fire Department One, so there's some pretty active young members. The lodge animal rescue class that I took last month was absolutely outstanding, with four other members, I was in Pefton Borough all weekend, Saturday and Sunday, full day both days, powered by a national company, it was pretty good, shows us, you know, some rock science, but it gave us some different tools and different techniques when we're called upon, it seems like a couple times a year we're called upon to help.
Do they bring in live, large animals and happy rescue?
Yeah, so it was kinda, it was good stuff, it was really good. Working with, occupied a lot of my time the last couple of weeks with NASCAR, because meetings and events and all that stuff, so that's a three-day event. At the end of Bike Week, the town usually sees quite a bit of overflow traffic, and you know, part of the racetrack is in Canterbury, so we were asked to staff, we were providing an engine all three days, that's not gonna leave the town any less covered, it'd be our second engine, Engine Three would be going there, paid by the track, so all costs paid by the track, you know, cost for the personnel, cost for the engine, for that. So I'm gonna try to rearrange my schedule when we get closer, so I'm kind of available in the area. You know, I do have my department things I need to take care of, so I can't be here Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but I'm gonna try to, the busier days are Friday and Sunday, and I'm gonna try to be around those, so.
Great, thank you. Excuse me, chief, what's the, do you have the date of that event? It's just the end of Bike Week, that last?
I have it on my calendar. The NASCAR event, stay off of 106, the 21st, 22nd, 23rd of June.
Oh, yeah.
The grant that we received last year, the $80,000 grant for new radios and throughout the fire department is disallation, I'm gonna be scheduling that the next week or two. We have a year to complete that, so that's, it works. As I told you, Herb, who took our bachelor, our full-time, well, our regular employee, three-day-a-week employee, he's a paramedic, but we don't have a paramedic transport license in town, so therefore we don't have the narcotics that he can use if warranted. So I'm working with the area department's pentecoup, Loudon in Belmont, to get them access to that, if they roll off without a paramedic, and they have the drugs on board, and he can use them to save a life or to decrease pain, he can access what he wants. There's a lot of red tape involved, as you can imagine, I've accomplished it with Loudon, we're done. I'm working with Pentecoup this week, they're coming up, we're getting all that big work done, so if it saves one life, yeah, it's worth it. Utility ones, I told you, our second forestry suffered a catastrophic pump barrier this winter, I wasn't spending a lot of money on it because, you know, for operational reasons, so we decommissioned it, it is now just a flatbed truck. Right now, before that, we never even had a flatbed truck, just to use to, you know, to go out for routine stuff, so we took that schedule off of it, and now it's just a flatbed truck with some forestry equipment on it, so had no cost to the town. Life at Pond Dam, at the request of this board, I went to visit it and met with one of the butters, that was, is it Mike Kennard? Yep, him and his wife, one Sunday morning, I took a ride up, went up there, and I took Evan Hotman with me, and we just kind of toured the area for an hour, and heard their concerns, and I was looking at it from an emergency response perspective, if, you know, how we gain access, and you know, if things were let go, you know, what damages could be, so that's the only perspective I was looking at. So they were happy, I gave my contact information for any concerns or any, you know, any questions, and that was it.
Do you have maps of that facility, of that area up there, so you can find?
Just the Google Earth, I brought it up on Google Earth, and I could kind of see where, you know, where things are gonna go and all that stuff. I haven't met with any of the damn people yet, but, so. The circus coming into town, I do have some tricky paperwork, but I know the gentleman is coming in tonight, so I have some questions for the board, I'd like to ask him, and I made, actually made a copy for him with my contact information on it, so encourage him to contact me with any questions, or if he, those are the things that I'd like you to ask him.
Okay.
And the river signs on all of our beaches will be going up by the end of the month, along with throw ropes and life safety rings and all that stuff, those will be going up by the end of this month.
They go up down the riverland right on the beach?
Riverland, yeah, the one at Brookfield Farms, there's three beaches that they probably generally access, Pebble Beach, where the drawings were a few years back. So we put up signs also so people know where they are, we put up a throw rope and a life reindeer and some life preservers, that's what they do, so we do that at all the beaches, and we take them down before, you know, when the swimming season's over.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Have you done, how long has the department done that?
Excuse me?
How long has the department done that?
Since the year that Chief Thorpe started that.
Yeah, great, what a good idea.
I think right over that, he started that, and we've grown since that, that's 201.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yep, so, that's all I have, any questions?
I don't think so, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Other than look for yourself in the newsletter this month, with the cute kids going pancake breakfast.
Yeah. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you.
Chief Tom.
Somebody get two, please, we got two.
Actually, I don't think so. I'll share with that.
Those can get to?
We're forwards. It's on the roll set.
Counting is over.
Yeah, apparently. Alright, since April 15th, the last select meeting, we've had nine incidents, one arrest, 128 citations, four accidents, 679 calls for service, seven summonses, and State Police covered 13 calls for us. We've had six hours of miscellaneous online training for the officers.
Can we just go back a second?
Yeah.
What are calls for service?
So every time we get a call from dispatch, so every time they give us a call, that's a call for service. And it could be anything, it could be a return phone call, it could be an accident, it could be an animal complaint, so anything we get from dispatch is a call for service.
And then those, like when Chief Kamal was just saying, the rate was up by 43%, is this a normal amount for us now, at this time of year?
Honestly, I have no way of knowing that.
Okay.
So what I could do, I suppose I could pull up last year's date, and try and figure it out, it's just, we don't have a graph like that, so our system is run through county.
Okay.
So I don't have stats from last year, or at my fingertips, I would just have to run separate reports.
Would that be helpful for anybody? Would you?
No.
I agree with that, so it depends on, I don't know.
Would it be helpful to know, like, with the fire chiefs report, it'd say, you know, this is a 43%?
So ours are a little different, because ours are, some of ours are self-initiated, so traffic stops.
Oh, okay.
So it all depends on what we had for manpower last year, if we had people on vacation, so it's really on the officers as well, so how many traffic stops they're making.
So if it's not, okay.
Right, so it's really all dependent on my officers, plus the calls that we're getting from dispatch, they're all calls for service.
I like this format much better.
We went through it back and forth on payroll.
Yeah, this is good, thank you. So does this amount of calls, recitations seem like a?
I mean, it's a lot, I mean, it's in 30, what, 30 days?
Yeah.
So it is a lot, considering I have two full-time patrolmen, and I have myself and Officer Dumas, we're in the same car for most of it, I'm hoping to get on the road at some point, and be stopping cars again, and taking calls again, so I'm hoping that number will actually go up, but it really depends, nice weather's coming, so people are out more, so I expect that to continue throughout the summer.
But you're comfortable, you don't feel the department's overwhelmed, or is this the handle?
No, I think we're handling decently. The training hours, the miscellaneous online training hours, we have an online training that we do that keeps us up to date on laws, so that's what that miscellaneous training is. Officer Dumas did a 200er, it's a training with SART team, that's what the Sexual Assault Research Team is. I completed my Phase One of my firearms instructor research training. Phase Two, I guess, scheduled for July, and then upcoming activities at the NASCAR race.
Okay, you're gonna have to ask the date, dirty.
Yeah, Canberra Elementary School Parade, it's next Friday, and then Memorial Day Parade for the town, May 27th, America will be helping out on both of those. And then the training that Chief Kamal was talking about, the Canberra Elementary School next Wednesday. And I did talk to Ken this morning about the Brookfield Farms event they have going on, what my concerns are.
Okay. Do you have a list of questions?
I didn't have a list, and I hadn't talked to him about it, so I didn't write anything down. Mine was more parking, making sure emergency services can get in there, God forbid something happens.
Is this over on the Intervale Road, or?
It's at the corner of Intervale, where that dirt road is going to the beach, that's my understanding.
It is.
Yeah.
Cross Genus.
Yes, across Genus, I didn't know if Mr. Mahoney was bringing a map in, that he could show where they were doing it, where they planned on parking cars, how many tickets has he already sold, you know, what's his expectation of how many people he's gonna be having there? Not to bid that, I went on the website to see what kind of performance they were doing, somebody falls, we don't have medical services readily there, it's gonna take time for somebody to get there, so just wanted to make sure that he had a plan in place for his parking and services to get in there, so.
Yeah, to get in, I'm sure the circus people are used to dealing, well, I don't know, if they carry a medic or?
Yeah, and that's what I mentioned again, about having a fire detail, having a fire detail down there, police detail, like, I don't know what his plan is, and they have three shows scheduled, so two on Saturday and one on Sunday.
Yeah, that's a lot of, that's a lot of people.
Are they setting up a tent, or?
Yeah, no.
You have somebody that can inspect it, right, for the town or not?
I don't, I don't know what the?
The fire department conducts the inspection using state regulations, and if it's a big tent, they probably call somebody from the Fire Marshal's Office, but looking at the website, it doesn't, if they perform under the SARS, is what they say.
Yeah, I think they mentioned that on the site, something about being beneath the SARS or something, so.
The bugs will get them before they?
Yeah, you can clean, right?
Oh my gosh.
You still got it?
I did have one thing, we had a very nice meeting, we sat in over at Sherwood Forest on Sunday, did their annual meeting, and we just talked a little bit, and they were very appreciative of past patrolling from the Canterbury Police Department, they don't know, I don't know what your schedule is or anything, but when you go by to swing through randomly, they seem to really appreciate it, that it helps people to know that there is a police presence in the area with any sort of the issues that they might be having. So again, I know you don't schedule things like that, but when you're coming by, it would be appreciated. Of course.
Nothing for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, absolutely.
And thank you for the new format.
Yes, no problem.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, everyone.
I'm smiling for the camera.
I am looking to see where the owl is.
Oh, so I was gonna talk to you, the owl is in the closet, because it did not work well enough, at least it did not work well enough when I put it in the corner, so I might be doing further testing where I put something in the middle, and then it might have a better chance, but for now, this looks like it's gonna have the best audio and video quality.
I think it is.
So, but I'll get back to you.
Thank you. I was looking because I was glad Cal asked if you could use that, so I was just looking for that.
Okay, I was looking for a real owl in the room.
Oh, yes.
The owl camera that I had achieved through, for round two. Oh, right, right.
That hasn't been used over at the library, so I'm hoping you can use that there. So, first Memorial Day hat on, if I could, looks like everyone's confirmed for Memorial Day proceedings, I have commitment from Fire, Police, the, all the Select Board members are asked to attend, parade forms at 9:45, and proceeds down the hill, so if you have any questions, just ask Mark Stevens himself, so that's Memorial Day. With the library hat on, it's been brought to my attention that I probably need to do another one of those RSA 11 explanations, the relationship between the library and town, with your new addition on board, and Cal being new in the position since I had done the last presentation. And my question to you, so that was like last May when we came over to the library, and we talked about what the Attorney General and what the State DOJ sets forward as the understanding between the town and the library, it's just nice to know how it works, because it's kind of very interesting and very different in the state of Hampshire as opposed to any other relationship. And it was also brought to my attention that people watching at home may wonder why I only talk about the outside building, because of course that is the only thing that I really need to report to you on. So my question is, what is the best form of delivery on that sort of information? What works best? Like if you attend the trustees meeting, or I did the presentation again, or I recorded the presentation, if you could watch at your convenience?
How many, is it for just the five of us, or how?
It's probably good information, I mean, the Friends group has also asked about that information, so I'm leaning towards like a 15-minute presentation recorded, that I could send you the video of.
That's fun, it's always nice to come into the library and sit with people if you wanted to record it with a live audience watching you, and send it out to whoever's not there, but.
So if you could just get back to me, as to, you know, don't have to decide now, but what would be the best means of communication? It's just a review of what we did last year, but it's worth putting out there, because I don't, it's an interesting relationship in terms of appropriate funds and RSA 11s and, you know, non-shareable foundations, as they relate to public funding and town appropriations versus the customer, so.
Is that something you're comfortable just sitting and giving all the information about, or do you want people to ask you questions as you go, or, I mean, if you're willing to sit there and make a nice video by the beautiful library fireplace, that just seems the best way to get it to a lot of people?
I think so, and then I could send it to you, and you can watch it as you're at revision, it can be used as a reference, if, you know, questions arise, not necessarily authority, but certainly Terry Knowles, who prepared the presentation and the slides, I use her slides, her PowerPoint, so it definitely is dependable information, and I'd also put it on the website, I mean, it wouldn't be, it would probably be something good to have.
Just stick it on the, like you said, the library website, if you've got members like Popple or anybody who doesn't understand how it works.
Maybe I'll do that.
Or for any, for anybody who might want to be a library trustee in the future.
Absolutely, it's good to have that information.
Yeah, okay, great.
So I'll do that, thank you, other than that, I have not much to report.
Wait a minute, I saw a blue car down the end of the line there.
That's new, Mrs. Baker's.
What? Okay.
Absolutely.
It's supposed to lead with the important stuff.
I should, if I had done that, I would have said, "Happy birthday, Campbell."
Well, thank you, and happy birthday, Rachel Baker.
Thank you.
Is it today?
No, it was yesterday.
So mine is today.
Happy birthday, everyone.
Happy birthday.
We should have brought a cake in.
Mary's is last week.
Oh my gosh.
And Roy Hatchens.
Yeah.
And Roy Hatchens, so it's a good day.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up to my trustees meeting.
Alright, thank you, Rachel.
John?
Here, we got a little bit of grading done, Southend Cricket Scales. New road, Oxbow, picked up the wood, to do that, I had brought in outside truck, you know, a day's worth of work, we picked up, like, I ditched as much as our time would allow. We have Beavers working in town, Scales, Applewell, and Misery, ties up a little bit of time, and lay down my time spent mowing.
A lot of rain, like.
Are you still having help from, not Colby, no, Denver, you said his name was like a college, and now?
Bowden.
Bowden.
He's in the first week of June.
Oh, he starts?
He's doing, he has a, a big test going on.
Yeah, yeah.
End of the year stuff.
Final exams and such?
I was supposed to have another guy today, no show, no.
Not the new one?
No.
Okay.
No, we, the person that you guys authorized us to hire, had found another job.
Okay.
So we got, so we're, no applicants now.
Okay, well, not okay, but okay.
Questions for me?
I don't think so, thank you.
Nope, thanks, Jen.
Thanks for cleaning that tree up, John.
Trees.
Just hope you don't burn, don't burn to any sticks while you're mowing. Let us know where you're going, let's see if you guys fifth graders out there.
Alright.
Sticks up the cemetery, I have to ask you about sticks up the cemetery.
Alright, so the first item is an accounts payable manifesting the amount of, this is accounts payable, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the amount of $143,455.19.
So move.
Ten seconds.
All those in favor?
And hand that to me when they're done signing.
Okay, alright.
So I can remember to take a picture for Adam.
Understood.
Do you always take a picture for Adam? Yes, but I forgot the last two times, so.
Alright, direct.
Okay.
Alright, next item is an accounts, or excuse me, payable manifest, and the amount of, Cal 62?
Yep. And second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I'm gonna stick that one.
Alright, looks like we've got several inter-fund transfers, what do we need to do with these?
So those have to be signed, those inter-fund transfers for?
You can go with that. Sticks at the cemetery.
Good to be.
Sticks at the cemetery. I could ask you about sticks at the cemetery.
All right, so the first item is an accounts payable manifesting the amount of, this is accounts payable, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
The amount of one hundred forty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars and nineteen cents.
So.
Ten seconds.
All those in favor?
All right.
And, um, hand that to me when they're done signing.
Okay. All right.
So I can remember to take a picture for Al.
Understood.
Do you always take a picture for Al? Yes. Uh, but I've heard I have the last two times, so.
All right, direct.
Okay.
Forget that. All right, next item is an accounts, or excuse me, payable manifest in the amount of Cal sixty-two?
Yep.
Sixty-two thousand, one seventy-five and six cents.
So.
And second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I'm gonna stick that one.
All right, looks like we've got several inter-fund transfers. What do we need to do with these?
So those have to be signed. Those are inter-fund transfers for warrant articles that were voted on at the time of meeting.
Yeah.
Um.
Cal, do you get this?
And, uh, trustees of the trust fund have to meet, uh, to authorize those. The guys authorize them to.
Okay.
Your board.
So no motion, just signatures?
Correct.
Okay.
Does that say what the board gave us?
Yes.
There was one inter-fund.
There is, there are other inter-fund transfers there. I'll explain those.
Okay. There was one that I was looking at. It was in a meeting past that I was wondering if it was.
Which one is that?
Not the I.
This is the highway equipment?
Okay.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you want me to read the, the, uh, accounts?
No.
No.
Just as, there's, there's one in there, I believe, for the building maintenance fund. And I can explain that to you.
Yeah, that's the last item, so that's probably a good last word. All right, so the next one is the backhoe lease agreement.
Yeah.
Oh wait, that one's done.
Okay. Yeah. Sounds good.
Signed here.
All right. All right, so the next one is to purchase the motor grader.
That's all been approved?
Yes, that was approved at town meeting.
Yes. Those are both rated.
And we're anticipating, uh, delivery in June.
That's great.
They sped it up, didn't they, or?
Yeah, they originally thought September, October, but the latest we got was June.
Very good.
And that's the delivery that they have placed out in Londonberry.
Yeah.
It may be a few weeks after that.
Probably, yeah. All right, so the last one is the one you were talking about, the.
Building maintenance, and that is a transfer from the cap reserve account in order to pay for the repairs to the solar panel and the floor repairs.
That was the one.
There it is.
Looks good over there.
Yes, the floor looks really good.
Oh, good. Go over and look. Now that I know how to work the door. Oh, did you, did you, uh?
You've got to worry about the iron panel.
Okay, good. Does it work as it's supposed to? So if I went in now and, and practiced?
No, no, the batteries are, I didn't get a chance to go over and change the batteries in there.
I told him like thirty minutes ago. Oh. And he's, um, what are you gonna do?
Let's look back at you.
I'm trying to figure out how to work all the doors.
Do we read this out?
We couldn't get the town all about it.
Uh, yeah, you could, yeah, okay.
So the next item is a leave request from Kent Folsom, who's, uh, gonna be on vacation from six-three twenty-twenty-four to six-six twenty-twenty-four. Great, yes.
Yeah.
Need a big red stamp, deny.
All right, so that brings us to the, Ken, do you want this back?
Sure.
If he doesn't get it back, he doesn't get to go.
Yeah, exactly.
So that brings us to the D for the Acrostrums for, um, the property on Baptist Hill Road. Do we need a motion or anything on this?
Uh, I think you took a motion at the last meeting to sell it. Mind me that, so you don't need a motion. So we're just signing it.
Okay. And do we need to fill in?
We have draft notes.
Yes. Yeah.
If they, if we need a motion, then.
Yeah, they, they, they motioned.
Scott made a motion to sell that.
Yeah, I, I thought that's what I remembered, so. All right.
Motion, let me get the town a few new red folders, look at those things.
Well reused. All right. We'll keep that to you, all right. Uh, notice of intent to cut water timber. It's a Hackleboro road.
Yes. Should be a map a lot more on there. I don't know, front page of Talkback and Florida, should be a mapping lot.
Yep, two, uh, so two-two-nine dash zero-zero-one. Not sure about the rest, it's sort of winding out.
It's not two-two-nine lot one. It got written twice.
Okay, that's what I'm looking at. So it's forty-seven acres total, right?
Yes.
And then I can't make out the signature on the three-fifty-four Hackleboro.
Yes, yeah.
So light injuries.
Hmm.
All right, and was there signing on this?
Yes.
Doesn't matter which line? Nothing's, we're down the bottom. It's forty acres there.
There's two lots, but one is a thirty-eight acre lot and one's a seventeen acre lot.
Hmm.
They have two classes.
Ken, in regard to the tax levy, do you need to read anything for that?
That is, that's the warrant?
Correct.
Nope, you don't need to read it.
So we don't.
That's just the signature.
Very good.
Oh, no, I have that document.
That is the tax warrant, tax, yeah. That is sort of tax, that's all the tax records, we set up the tax ones.
Yeah.
Yay. We don't have to sign every page, so that's good. Hey, I used to do tax checks, I'm doing crazy. No, it hasn't. But still, it would be a bit.
Thank you. Yeah.
I don't, I think they're all empty at this point.
Yeah, empty, empty. So I can hand them over if you want?
Okay.
Excuse me.
All right, so that brings us to approval of minutes. Now, if everybody had a chance to read minutes.
Yes. So if we're starting with the May sixth one, I got, um, I got feedback with, um, proposed changes from Beth. So if you wanna start, we can go through the changes of texts.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Do you read them, Cal, or do you want me to read them?
Um.
What, Pat, what, what's the best way to do that?
I think I'll read them because I have the printout in front of me and we all know it's from you, so it's, I don't think it is.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna get back to that.
Okay. So, line one of that. This is in the ESMI, um, representative section. Um, Beth proposes adding, um, after J, adding another section K that says, um, comment made by Webb Stout that it is worthwhile to note that the material that they process sits outside and it's rained. I'm gonna change that to rained on. Um, and all the wells, they're not showing it. Did he say raining or rain?
I think he said, he basically said it's raining on it. I put the, the, I went back because I remember the very last comment that Webb made when they were, he said, "It's important to know that it's sitting out there, not covered and raining on it, and the test wells at the perimeter are not showing any contamination they're being tested." So that's, that was the, the gist of what he said, but the.
Yes.
It's not, it's not verbatim that comment, it's.
Understood.
Um, it was his, a second, it was just his parting comment that it was important for us to know that.
Okay.
So if you all agree, then I'll put, um, comment made by, made by Webb Stout that it is worthwhile to note that the material they process sits outside and is rained on, um, and is rained on, um, the testing in their perimeter wells isn't showing anything.
He, he didn't, you know, his precise language was, the, the test wells don't show it. But, I mean, I think it's fairly obvious that what he was saying is it's not showing signs of, um, what I referenced.
Contamination.
Yeah. What I referenced in, um, the email I sent to Cal is back in, in section five when they're talking about, they have two places where they talk about the perimeter wells and the testing that they do. And that's what he was referring to, though he doesn't say that precisely because they just talked about it for twenty minutes, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Again.
So one more time, I'm gonna read what I'm gonna put in. So comment made by Webb Stout that it is worthwhile to note that the material, material that they process sits outside and is rained on, and the test wells aren't showing signs of contamination.
That, that to me is what, what he, was the gist of his saying.
Okay.
The only word he didn't use was contamination, it was inferred. But if it's okay to put it in as a summary of his thing, that's.
It's not, it's not a quote.
Okay, it's not a quote.
So if all three of you are comfortable with that, then I'm gonna mark it as.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
All right, the next one is line two fifteen. Um. Let's see. Um, so line two, between line two fifteen and line two sixteen, adding another, um, line that just says, um, Kent requested that Beth, uh, take over contacting the garden club. Beth said yes.
I just wanted to make sure that, that it was okay with you that, that I'm taking that. That you asked me and I said yes.
Okay. All right, so that was good. Um, and then at the end of that line, discussion included Lori Lockwood and Donna Miller being the brains of the committee presenting the plan outlining. Okay, so at the end of item two, inserting, um, a second, another sentence that says, discussion included Lori Lockwood and Donna Miller being the brains of the committee presenting the plan and outlining what resources they might need from the town to complete.
Again, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear what, what I had talked to Lori about and what they were offering.
Gotcha.
Short plan, they just need, they might need a truck.
Okay.
Or something.
Sounds good to me. Yeah.
That's okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then line two twenty-four. Um, and this is the one, I don't know Beth, if you saw my reply emails?
Oh, I didn't.
Um, I discovered while preparing tonight that, um, the reason this item is messed up is because I switched from handwriting to typing in the middle of it.
Oh, okay.
So that's why.
I did, actually, I did see that.
It's missing, it's missing everything. So, um, for item forty-three, the notes need to include, um, uh, well, first strike section five above the previous discussion because the discussion in section five is about ESMI and it's, and the safety of their soil, not about the jury dirt ordinance.
So this is just an improper reference, that's all.
Understood. All right.
Um, and then, uh, Beth proposes inserting the following. Kent talked with NHMA, with our attorney, and they felt that the best approach to address this was through the road standards. They feel that our existing road standards, because it tells what the aggregate and the base should be, is sufficient. We should use that since they are accepted best practices and a separate ordinance that we might create only addresses one facet of the operation.
And is that, okay, Ken?
For clarification, that was our town council that said that.
Yes.
Not, not NHMA legal.
Oh, okay, I thought you had talked to them both, but I don't know who said that.
But our town council suggested that we use our road ordinance.
Okay.
Our road, road standard ordinance.
Okay.
So it's not second with NHMA?
Yes. And you can just write town council, yeah.
But the rest of that was okay, that's, that was just a little.
Yeah.
And because there was no, um, mention of the ordinance in, in the, in the minutes. Do you have, um, when you, when you found your handwriting to?
This, this matches that pretty much, so, um, I'm good with this language if everybody else is.
Yeah. And is that what you said? I know it is because I watched the video. Thank you, Edgar. The videos are very helpful for going back, particularly to check, uh, something like this where I didn't quite remember, so, thank you.
Probably twenty of those views are me.
Yeah.
And then, so line two-two-five, which is where it currently says, Beth will ask NHMA's Hardwood to Travel Workshop on Thursday about this. I didn't say what this is, so Beth proposes changing this to whether or not appeals can be made to substitute materials defined in the road standard.
That was the question I asked at the time and you told me to go ask and then I forgot that I needed to ask that. So I haven't, but I will. But that was the question I have to ask.
So if everybody is fine with those amendments, do you have any more that she wanna bring up?
None for me.
That I didn't see, anything. Okay, then when you make the motion, we say approve the minutes as amended.
You want this one?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of May sixth, twenty-twenty-four as amended. Second.
And.
All those in favor?
All right. Aye.
I'm gonna say in third. Thank you, Cal.
All right, moving on. Cal, do you wanna look at the May fifteenth?
Yes, the public ones are next.
That's what I was writing, the, uh, public minutes from May fifteenth.
Um, did you know these earlier?
Yes, you did.
You might not have had time to read them.
I actually did. To me, they look good.
Uh. Maybe I've got the right ones.
These are public, the public ones, yeah.
They look good to me too, thank you.
Uh, yes. Yes, I read them as well and they did look fine.
Very good. Uh, make a motion then that we accept the minutes from May fifteen, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that'll bring us to the executive session minutes, also May fifteen, twenty-twenty-four.
You've not seen these before, so.
Correct.
Take some time to read them.
Yeah.
In case you're wondering why your names are on the back, I have yours.
I'm not sure it matters, but. For the one that says, right up there. Yeah, I can find where it says Beth. Next one over, that one.
It's the one with the highlight and the red.
Ah, that's better. Okay. Now, actually, as a, just a point of order. So these are, see, these are executive session. If we have something that we want to comment or amend in these, do we have to go back into executive session to do that?
I guess it probably depends on what you want changed, because I think before.
If it's grammar, spelling, punctuation, or like that, no.
No.
If it's content that.
I would think, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And I don't have anything at the moment, I was just wondering.
Yeah.
You should have light music playing while you read. Kind of a Jeopardy thing.
No, that would make me go too fast. No, that would make me go too fast.
Got one hair problem.
No worries. Everybody else good?
Brass.
Good.
I I think this is fine. I would say anything glaring or anything left out.
So I'll make a motion to accept them?
Second.
And third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now, you can class them down before you lose them.
Exactly. I was just going to say that. Read back at you. Thanks, Cal. All right, so that takes us through, I think, all the minutes we have to approve.
There's one more.
Yeah.
Yep.
We have one more.
Oh, that's right. So from the.
Oh.
So the draft minutes for the meeting at forty-eight Robert Shore Drive on May the eighteenth.
Is that sums it up?
Yeah.
Looks good to me.
All right. So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the May eighteen, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
This is the most streamlined set of minutes. Very nice.
All right, Ken, what do you think? Would you start a new business if you like?
Yep, why don't we do that?
So scheduling right to know seminar for all boards.
Yes, and as part of that, I have. That first, the first week of June. I started looking at dates and what other boards have meetings.
Yep.
The first week of June on six, three, you have a selections meeting. As a reminder, on six, five, you have a meeting in Bosquen.
Yeah.
Kind of rescue.
That's it.
And on.
It's in it?
Correct. Uh, no, that's at five.
Okay.
No worries. Yeah. And then on June sixth, there's the community, the post-community meeting.
Yeah.
With DES and Shaker Village.
Yeah.
So have people signed up for that yet or we know anything further on that?
I'm on a phone call, a Zoom call with Dave Katz, DES, on Thursday. So we set it for June sixth and I'm waiting to to talk to them. DES and Dave Katz have already agreed that that date and that time work for them. So we're going to work on the outline on Thursday and then we will put it on Town and Dale, the Town website and every other place.
Yeah.
That can be done.
Yeah.
Representatives.
Sure, there's yours for us.
So. So we'll do that. And that'll be at the.
And that'll be at the town hall.
Yeah, correct.
Can I ask you another question?
Yeah.
Are you going to mail letters to the board?
We will mail letters to the twenty-four abiding properties via regular mail. So.
Ken, if you need to know at the moment, I already responded, but I will not be there on the fifth.
Okay.
To the.
Yeah, I thought that's right. Thought I.
That's opening day of the of the market and I have responsibilities that are there.
Same. So looking at some dates, some potential dates for right to know seminar put on by our attorney. I had six, he he thought two two-hour sessions.
Oh, really? Wow.
Well, depending that gives people that could make it to one, the opportunity to make it to a second one or another one. If we're going to invite all board members and.
Okay, good.
Everybody, it probably would be a good idea to have two different dates in case somebody can't take one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I had tentatively six, four and six, five, or six, four and six, eighteen. I looked in June at the meeting schedules for all the various boards and committees. And those are dates that are available in June unless you want to push it out to July. I think sooner the better.
I can do four, not eighteen. I will be an organ on the evening, but I will certainly be here for the fourth. And they'll be the same, correct?
They'll be the same presentation. They'll just be two, two different ones. Yeah, two different dates.
Ken, am I correct? We can only strongly encourage.
That's correct. That's correct. We can't force anybody, but we can strongly encourage people to attend. And given those dates in that time of year, I would hope that somebody could. If we went from seven to nine or something like that, or six thirty to eight thirty. Along those lines, give the chance to hold them work and.
Yeah.
Six to eight and then.
Yeah.
Eight.
Were they honest or recorded?
I don't know. I was going to ask.
Okay. I mean, they record the ones that when NHMA gives them and we can give those out to boards? But I don't know if it's our council and our private thing.
I don't know. I'm going to, that was one of the questions I was going to ask.
Yeah. Well, I would be surprised if they would, but maybe.
Yeah. So. Six, four and six, five or six, four and eighteen?
Either way, I can only do the four.
Ken, anything?
Yeah, I got everything. They're all open, I guess.
Okay. All right, well, why don't I shoot for six, four and six, five and see what the attorney says and.
Yeah.
We can go to six, four and six, eighteen if we have.
Yep, that sounds good.
We're going to do those, you said, this evening, right?
Yes.
There might, I'm just trying to think if there's any board member, well, they could come on the fourth. I was going to say, if there's any members on board who will also be at the opening of the market, but they should be able to come on the fourth if they need to.
Right.
Are we ready in the library?
Probably.
Yeah, if we can.
It's the same. It's not like it's a per person fee, right? We're paying for the lawyers.
No, we're just paying hourly rate.
Okay, so that's more than a barrier.
Yeah. All right, anything further on that?
Nope.
Okay. All right, next item is Riverlands Conservation Area opening date change.
Yes, so there was a proposed, the Conservation Commission proposed some changes. Typically, we don't open the gate until Memorial Day.
Yeah.
They would like it open on May fifteenth since our weather seems sort of changed. It's going to be ninety on Wednesday.
Oh, my gosh.
So they would like to open it on on May fifteenth and then close it on November first.
Is there any reason not to?
Not that I don't know. I talked to the police chief, but he didn't have a problem with that. The reason, the reason we really are using those dates was. The more people that are there, the less we have problems with break-ins and vandalism. And so if there's only one car or two cars down there, that creates a problem with vandalism and break-ins.
I got you.
Oh, interesting. I would have thought it was the other way.
More activity because people are in and out of the parking lot and that was, that's what we found out. That's what we figured out.
Yeah.
We had to put cameras up and things and and that's what we found out was actually the more activity, the least amount of problems we had in the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
So that was sort of it. And it allows people to block the park on the side of the road.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
There are some more, I got an email from Conservation. There are some more proposed changes and signage and things like that down there, but that's for the June thirteenth. That was, there's a lot of things they want to do.
Yeah.
And I figured that would be better as studies agenda is ready for.
Yeah.
So if you're okay with that, let's say you board members.
Yeah.
Conservation Commission says yes.
And that'll be, so what I'll do is I'll let the police fire go and have them open it tomorrow.
Yeah.
And let the fire fire go that's open in the highway environment.
And the Conservation Commission?
What's that?
And let the Conservation Commission know.
Correct, yes. And then at the next meeting, they have some changes to the policy because there was a policy for that area. And they had some changes for that. So I'll send all those, that email out to you for the next meeting.
Yeah, I looked at the signs today, too. They are very wordy. I did a little editing on that.
Want to do a little old business?
Sure. Our first equipment isn't here yet, so as well.
All right.
Gazebo repairs. I got two. Is. So I read the last, you read one at the last meeting.
Yeah.
And this is one that I just got.
Correct. So this is from.
That one is from Eric Baker.
Baker, yeah. Fan stand railing project as outlined in specs. Total price, five thousand five hundred dollars, requiring a fifty percent deposit to start. And it says notation available, start work in June.
And was that outlined, that was?
And and the specs were to the specs that Dale had drawn up.
Oh, okay. So it's all, that's all.
Yep, and the other one. It was for six thousand dollars, twenty-five percent for fifteen hundred dollars, we do private work. And this agrees with the specifications. The only difference is this one outlines that they will use. Stainless fasteners with the option to be removable for town events. And that one says they will not be removable. So I know that came up at the town meeting. There was a question about whether they should be removed or not. And I think Mark Hockley just felt they should and I don't know.
Ken didn't?
I spoke.
You didn't.
That's what I thought. And tell me again, you felt that they were.
That's what holding that thing up.
Yeah, structural components. Okay. Understood, yeah.
And I, my guess is that you told this guy he didn't want to take them available or wouldn't make them.
Right, right.
What was his name?
That's Alex Young, isn't it?
Yeah, Alex Young.
Alex, okay.
Discussion.
Um, can I just see?
Give us the package there.
I just think it's wonderful that all these pieces are written out in hand. It's great. And that's the only difference is that Alex is, what was the difference in price?
Five hundred dollars.
More, Alex was more or less, less?
Less, uh, more.
Oh, more.
More.
Probably stainless steel fasteners.
My gamer, she's like, these days.
And do do the specs require stainless steel?
No.
And if they don't require it, what might Eric Baker use if they're not?
It didn't say. His his quote wasn't as detailed as the other one.
Right.
I'm guessing you would use stainless steel.
I think. I'm slightly predisposed to go with Alex Young, one because he has Mark as his mentor. So if there's any questions that come up about. The the work. And also several people in my neighborhood have used Alex lately and have been very pleased with his with his work and work ethic. So. I don't know Eric's work. I think of him as guitars, not buildings, so.
I'm just going to see now.
Yeah. So I, so I don't know.
Can I just say from the Historic District Commission? I think they would want to use, if Alex had been tutored by Mark over this, just in terms of trying to keep things, you know, as authentic as possible. That would probably be what the HDC, I mean, they haven't been asked other than I think just in vague discussion, but I think that would be what they would say.
Appreciate that. Ken?
I'm going to go with the low bid. I know Eric's work. I've worked with him a lot over the years.
He does, I did, I did never realize he did construction work as well.
I did a lot of work up with Kathy Sutton, who I don't do. A lot of his work is in there. I, I mean, we sort of put out there that assuming everything is the same between bids, that we go with the low bid, I think. And that's where I prefer to see it still.
Okay. I'd not should be with either man's work, so.
Well, I haven't personally worked with. Alex, so I don't, so I don't know. The difference is kind of minimal. I I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know. Would. I guess my question, one of my questions for you, Kent, would be, I know that the railings are structural. What are they so structural that if they're designed to come out for one day? Will the, will the building fail? Or is it?
Well, what you don't know is whether we're going to get a good blow. And that's could happen at any point, right? Good heavy wind blowing is going to affect that man stand.
Yes.
I think, Ken, if I remember, the gazebo as designed was not designed with removable.
That's right.
Yeah.
And it was designed with what Dale gave us for a spec on the way as both remarked.
Right.
Mark wanted us to copy the ones he'd used at the Sam Lighters.
I remember, yeah.
I don't feel really strongly about having those railings removable. I don't think those add much to the proceedings. It seems like an extra.
Yeah, I I think, you know, shouldn't they be, in my mind anyway, let's make them not removable.
Yeah.
Eric decided safety.
Yeah.
I hate to see a tragedy.
Well, it just seems more nitpicky, too, if it's an easy way to make it stronger. And it doesn't, you know, for one day a year, they only want it for the fair, right?
Well, it was like a, yeah.
This is year round.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's other uses.
I don't feel strongly one way or the other, really.
I've got to agree with Kent then. I think we should go with a low bid.
Do you want to specify that you use stainless steel fasteners?
Yes. I I don't think that's on the issue.
Yeah.
All right, do we need a motion then to accept slogan?
Yes.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the low bid of Eric Baker for five thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you need to say with a stipulation or did Cal affect you?
With the stipulation that we use stainless steel fasteners. Thank you. All right. All right, I think that's everything back. Ken?
No?
Thank you. All right, anything further on gazebo repairs?
That's just the wood, we're not doing anything to the roof, right?
That's next year.
Oh, okay.
All right, so that brings us to highway staffing update.
I kind of already said that. The one candidate that we had determined we were going to hire took her job somewhere else, so we backed out to zero candidates.
Yeah.
So fast, you know, from when we offered to.
I called him the next morning and he said that he had dropped, two hours after he dropped the paperwork off at our office on Wednesday. He got an offer for another job and it's.
Okay, are we advertising currently?
We are.
Okay.
We are.
Airs Road.
Yes, so you have a meeting, we have a meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah. That's the one that.
I made myself, I made myself a drink and a diagram for this because I was like, what?
So the meeting is tomorrow night at four o'clock or afternoon at four o'clock. I think you guys have a packet in your.
Correct. Yeah, this one, right?
Yes, yeah. So the first letter is, that's dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand eleven, is the current agreement. The next page is just a dated eight, twenty-nine, seventeen, is just a history.
Oh, that one I did.
Yeah.
The gentleman's agreement one?
Yeah, the one dated eight, twenty-nine, seventeen.
Correct. Correct. That was, that was. Correct, that was, that was, uh, that's just kind of a history, um...
Okay, so in two thousand eleven, they formalized the agreement, and that's the letter, that's this?
That's the letter that's on the front.
Okay, so why are, do they wanna change it now?
Uh... There was question last year about, um, what work was going to be done, what work had been done, uh, between the two road agents. The road agent in Northfield left, and, um, so they slightly felt that they wanted to do something different. So, um, I'm not sure, again, that, I'll try to explain a few things as we go on. The next page is a map showing where...
I do not understand this map, I must confess.
So if you start, if you start at the bottom of the page, says Route one thirty-two.
Yes, or the...
Yeah, here.
Alright, so which is north? If you hold it this way?
So if you hold it with Route one thirty-two at the bottom.
Yes.
It's like you're standing at the intersection of Route one thirty-two and Ayers Road, looking east. So if you start there, it actually starts at Northfield, it's a section in Northfield. It's eleven hundred and thirty-eight feet long, it's part of Northfield, that's dirt. The next is Canterbury for nineteen hundred and eighty-eight feet. And then it turns back into Northfield for thirteen hundred and forty-six feet.
Right, I'm being dumb. Uh, point, pointy.
Okay, so it starts here, this is, this is Northfield.
Okay, this is Northfield?
This is Northfield, everything to the left of the straight line is Northfield.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So, this is Northfield for eleven hundred and thirty-eight feet, nineteen hundred and eighty-eight feet goes back into Canterbury.
Alright, so this actually goes like there's a piece of road here?
Yes.
Oh, okay, oh, got it, got it, got it, got it.
Yep, and then the road continues, goes back, moves back into Northfield.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And at the thirteen hundred and forty-six feet, and then the rest is Canterbury, but this is dirt, it shows it's paved just past the first house.
Okay.
And it's paved all the way up, and then the line is, uh, it's, it turns to dirt right here, this is Cerrano.
Okay.
It's paved for nineteen hundred and twenty-six feet.
Got it.
And then it turns to dirt, and then it ends at Classify, Classify section.
And then this is like Windfall Road or something like this that goes up?
Yep, 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 that's Class Six from here.
So all of this is Class Six?
This is all Class Six, all the way over to...
Ah, okay.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, okay.
So if you go to the next page...
Thank you.
If you go to the next page, it shows what our highway department has done since two thousand nineteen on Ayers Road. And it, and this is not just the Canterbury, or not just the Canterbury section, but includes the Northfield and Canterbury section.
So all this is Ayers Road total?
This is Ayers Road total from the town of Canterbury.
For what year?
For two thousand nineteen, twenty-one, or some, class of twenty, degraded in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Oh, yeah, I said there are the dates up there, sorry. Okay.
And, and you, you can see on the front, on the first page of the first letter, the agreement that we have now, it says we will share summer maintenance and the costs that are included in summer maintenance on a fifty-fifty basis on Ayers Road. So you can see, this, this is what our highway department has done. And if you go to the next page, it's the proposed agreement, the, the last proposed agreement that we got. And it says Canterbury will perform summer maintenance on Ayers Road, and Northfield will contribute a hundred and fifty dollars each year to assist with the maintenance costs of the Northfield portions of Ayers Road. Hundred and fifty dollars. As you can see from the map, as you can see from the map, Northfield has twenty-four hundred eighty-four feet of dirt road, Canterbury has twenty-eight hundred ninety-six feet. So Canterbury is sixty-six percent, Northfield's thirty-four percent of the total road, but the dirt portion, it's only another, it's only four hundred feet difference. And they're proposing a hundred and fifty dollars, and you can see from what we've spent on material since two thousand nineteen, a hundred and fifty dollars wouldn't pay to send our pickup truck out there, never mind one, not even one dump truck of quarryback. And you can see how much quarryback we put out there. And again, this is, this is Canterbury and Northfield, but, um, it's just, I, you know... A hundred and fifty dollars is, to me is kind of a, it's all gas.
Well, it was interesting because when I, when I, because I couldn't quite figure out what the difference between the two letters and proposals were, but it, the, originally, it was talking about Ayers Road in its entirety. So, you know, we, we plowed it, they plowed Ayers Road in its entirety, and we did summer maintenance in its entirety. But now to break it up like that seems, um... And what about, you know, in the, in this newsletter that we got, they also referenced Oak Hill Road to Intervell, they've included that, but they don't talk about what happens to Oak Hill Road in summer, in winter.
So, and I'll just kind of pick up on that, um, in Northfield, um, Ayers, Ayers Road is, Northfield owns twenty-two hundred feet of Ayers Road, Fellows Hills, uh, they own forty-six hundred feet. So that's sixty-eight hundred feet total. In Canterbury, we, we have fifty-four hundred feet in Canterbury's Road, twelve hundred feet of Oak Hill, and two thousand feet of Intervell. Because since, since they took over, um, well, St. Augie Pond in Northfield, but it's Intervell Road, Canterbury. The state used to plow all of that. They rebuilt it five or six years ago. Since they rebuilt it and they, they gave it to Northfield. So since that happened, Northfield comes down to Oak Hill Road, takes a left on Intervell, and continues down to St. Augie Pond. So they plowed a section of Intervell Road, and then on the way back, they did the same thing.
Yeah.
So they picked up about thirty-two hundred feet of plowing since they took over that, those, those roads. Again, thirty-two hundred feet. We plowed forty-six hundred feet of Fellows Hill.
Yep.
Saves them from having to come all the way out and just do that one section.
Oh, forty-six hundred, oh, there, that, because it's twenty-two hundred.
Well, they would, Fellows Hill does not touch Northfield by a road, other than Intervell Road or Shaker Road in Canterbury and Shaker Road in Belmont.
Right.
And in between is Fellows Hill.
Right.
So they would have to go through Belmont or through Canterbury to get to that one section.
But didn't you just say we plowed forty-six hundred feet of that?
We plowed, we, that was part of the agreement that we plowed that.
Right, but the, the distance of that is like twenty-two hundred feet, right?
No, it's forty-six, I'm sorry, it's thirty-two hundred feet.
Thirty-two hundred feet, okay.
Thirty-two hundred feet. They plowed, uh, um... I'm sorry, Oak Hill and Intervell is thirty-two hundred feet. Fellows Hill is forty-six hundred feet. So we plowed more on Fellows Hill than they do combined on both Oak Hill and Intervell. So when they asked to, when they talked about that in the new proposal, it also seems like, maybe they're still the short end of the stick, so to speak.
Yeah. A hundred and fifty bucks yearly, as you say.
Have you thought of any suggestions on what we should do?
Uh, I talked to John and, I mean, I, I think, other than the hundred and fifty dollars, that it's agreeable.
Yeah.
It's, we're on Shaker Road plowing, it's not that big of a deal for us to continue it out. Same thing that they coming down, they're coming down Oak Hill Road, and for them, that, we would call that a wash, I guess. The hundred and fifty dollars for all the dirt work on, on, uh...
Ayers.
Ayers Road is certainly unacceptable, given the, given the amount of work that we put into it. And, and, you know, I...
So the winter part of the deal, you're okay with?
Yeah, yeah.
Fellows Hill for Ayers and Oak Hill?
Correct.
Okay, but summer? Summer, they're talk, they are proposing that we maintain all of Ayers Road, correct? That was my question, or just the parts? Uh, because in, in the first letter, it says Ayers Road in its entirety, and this one it just says Ayers from one thirty-two to...
That is, correct. To the Class Six portion, which is the entire part.
Which is basically the entire, okay. So it used to be fifty-fifty, and now they just wanna give them a hundred and fifty bucks?
Yeah, and, and again, that's, you know, that's twenty-five hundred feet of, of dirt road, and we have to be paying a hundred and fifty dollars per year is, in, in my, my position would be unacceptable, yeah. So tomorrow night, when you meet with them, that would be the part that I would suggest that you dwell on is...
Yeah.
But we'll call winter maintenance a wash, but the summer maintenance has to be changed.
Yep.
And what about, um, the Oak Hill part in summer?
Again, that would be a wash with Fellows Hill. Oak Hill and Intervell maintenance, winter maintenance versus the Fellows Hill winter maintenance.
Correct, but it doesn't say anything about who's maintaining that in summer.
Those are paved roads, so the town, best towns, their own, our own towns.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, yeah. Does John have a dollar amount in mind?
I, he did.
And we don't wanna leave it at fifty-fifty because?
Well, and we could go back to that, we could just say, I mean, you could say that, you know what, we, we like the arrangement we have now, why, why wouldn't we change it?
Yeah.
So, you could, you could take that statement. Keep that in mind, see.
Yep.
I don't know enough about it to know, but if, why, you know, I mean, it's a good deal for them, but...
Well, and, and, and one of the issues is that it was a fifty-fifty, uh, but they didn't spend any money in the last year, or two years, on, on their section of the dirt road. And when the phone calls start coming into our highway department, and we say, well, call Northfield, then people get angry with us.
Yeah.
Especially Canterbury residents.
Yeah.
So, we don't have any control over what they do with a portion of their road.
That's a being a fifty-fifty, I think, so.
Yeah, well.
Just leave it. Except now, just so I make sure I understand, so this amount of, um, uh, puddles created and, and ditching and everything, and the stone brought in, this was Canterbury's cost to maintain all of Ayers Road up to the Class Six?
John did not have his breakdown of where he put this material.
Okay.
He just says Ayers Road. So, some of it was in Canterbury and some of it was in Northfield.
And Northfield spent at that, over this time, spent?
More or less nothing.
Because they didn't want to, or they didn't have a road agent?
Their road agent didn't feel that, well, the road agent, last year, the person that was the road agent, didn't even know about this agreement.
Ah.
And I don't know how long he was the road agent, but apparently he's not there anymore.
Oh.
And I don't know who the new road agent is.
So we've got agreement checks, sorry, that, that we're happy with, that they haven't honored for two years? We've been picking up the cost, and so at least for two years, it should be...
They have done some maintenance to their section that comes out on the northern part, because Ayers Road splits.
Yeah.
And the north section that comes, that, that is totally in Northfield, um, has been maintained by them, uh, particularly because of washouts, the state, uh, the dirt road washes out into the U one thirty-two, and the state calls and it says, hey, you gotta come, clear up this section when you do. On the southern entrance, it's not as, as severe.
Gotcha.
Randy?
Randy?
Can't wait.
Yeah.
Will be there at Jones', then?
John will be there, John will attend.
You as well.
I'll, yes, yeah.
Alright, so, we'll see you then.
Okay, thank you for explaining the map.
Yeah.
I figured, I kind of sort of knew, I went on Google Earth and looked, but, as I said, drink, drink it a diagram for the, for the deal. I'll bring that tomorrow.
Alright, no sign of our six fifteen?
I have just no idea.
Okay, so why don't we just continue on?
Yep.
Well, let's, we wanna try to get a move to your road, you know? Why don't we?
I can also, I guess.
Okay. Alright, so why don't we move on then to updating PD's special detail policy?
Uh, I think you have that policy in your packet also?
Yeah.
And the policy that you see before you has the strike crews, changes. Um, I have a clean copy here, if you decide that this is okay, we won't sign it. You can see at the, on, on the first page, um, there were some changes there, we struck some, some things out there. On the second page, uh, top of the page, we updated the cost.
Yep. So essentially, a contractor would pay ninety dollars an hour, right?
For the officer plus fifteen for cruiser required.
And the town would get?
The detail officers would be paid sixty-five.
No, so we would get the difference.
Correct.
So sometimes, um, when we have tree work and stuff going on in Canterbury, and there's a cruiser from Epsom or something sitting there, they're dealing, they're using a policy such as this?
Correct.
So we would be paying them to?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, on number ten of that second page, we changed it to two details during a scheduled meeting.
I remember. I think that was it. Should we do some, that was all?
Yeah.
We need to vote on this, or are we just signing?
I guess discussion and probably a motion to... Because it is a, it is a policy.
Are we signing this with a crosshairs, or are you gonna clean it out?
No, I have a clean copy here for you guys to sign if you choose, if you don't have any changes to this.
I'm assuming the chief is fine with this.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, the, um, well, when he, he said he was going to present this to us, he talked about the different shifts and the one sixteen hours or two shifts, and so, yeah. And the rates, I would assume, are also standard?
Yeah, the, the rates are the ones that, that, uh, we're doing now.
Okay. When was this last updated? Oh, January twenty-fifth.
Yeah. And, and the updates to this policy, the previous updates are all then to the cost of the, the officer and the cruiser things. We haven't significantly changed any, any of the language in this.
No, it doesn't look like it. Uh, I just have a question about... Uh, I just have a question about the strikeout in number twelve. So at the time that they're doing a special detail, they're basically off the clock in Canterbury, and they're only being paid for the special detail, correct? Is that what that means?
Correct, they're covered by the town's insurance, but they are not.
They're not double dipping as a word?
Double dipping, as, as a term that you could use. They're not being paid their hourly rate for the town of Canterbury as well as the detail pay.
Even though technically, they're still working for Canterbury?
They're still, they're still members of the Canterbury Police Department and covered by the town and, and have all the authority. So if somebody drove by and was weaving and had an accident, they can still determine what, what caused the accident, if it was something that, you know, was DWI or something like that, they can still perform their duties that way. But they're, they would most likely call a, 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 a duty officer.
Okay, got it. And this?
They don't argue even with the law enforcement duties.
But this?
This looks like what we discussed.
But why, but if that's, then why is it crossed out? That should be in there, shouldn't it?
Nope, because they're not being paid by the town, they're being paid by the, I mean, technically, they are because we do the paperwork, but, um, they're not being paid by the town for their current work. As a, as a, right, the contractor, right, the contractor is paid.
Okay, I'm, I must be reading it wrong then, because it sounds like this is saying they should not be paid twice, but that's what's struck out.
That's, it says that.
No officer shall be paid by the town for the same time.
Right. But the, the problem is, they are being paid by the town technically, because we provide a check. The contractor pays the town.
Oh.
And we provide a check. So, so if someone was to take this literally, it would be, it, it could cause us a problem.
Okay, you see my confusion?
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right, okay, no, that, that makes, so long as it's clear that they're not being, paying their hourly rate and being paid special duty, because we did have an issue about that in the past, and we did attract it. So let's not have that issue again. So if this is fine, then fine.
I'm ready. Okay, you sure?
Okay, there's a clean copy there.
Thank you. All right, so looking for a motion to accept the special detail policy revised June first, twenty-twenty-four. So moved?
I seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You need a drink and a diaper and a pack of stuff. Are we completely caught up?
Yeah, uh, this is the website, six fifteen. Probably got blocked in the elevator.
Understood.
So we can go to the website, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
All right, on special detail policy.
As long as I'm heading this stuff tonight.
Oh, I need this. Did you already do new business?
Yes.
Oh goodness, um, we were wondering if we could, we just had a few questions on, um, on the, the waiver and all that, because we weren't sure what the next process was, and we were just wondering if we can just quickly, like maybe five minutes, address the board as a whole?
Okay, yeah, come on.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. There was a copy of, may I have?
Please do.
Yes, please.
We're fairly informed here, so.
We have minutes from two thousand nineteen?
Understood, okay, yeah.
Two thousand nineteen, okay.
No, sorry.
County, no more of a budget, yeah.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Okay, so back in two thousand, I want to do some of the talking that now.
Please do, yeah, go figure, have a seat, or whatever you want to do.
So in two thousand seventeen, we applied for a road upgrade agreement for, um, this lot and map number. So two twelve, two twelve, and then sixteen, and now we're doing subdivision of two, which would be sixteen-one, sixteen-two, sixteen-one, sixteen-two. So our question was, um, is this waiver still applicable since it still falls under a sixteen? Or do we have to go through the whole process again?
Excellent question.
So the, the road waiver and upgrade agreement are typically, are, are part of the building permit process. Before you receive a building permit, you have to sign a road waiver.
Okay.
So anybody that builds a new house on that road, on any of the private or Class 6 road, would be required to have a, a Class 6 road waiver.
Um, so our intent is to sell those two pieces of property to sixteen-one, sixteen-two, and it's not our intent to build on them. So that's where it gets kind of great, and that's where we weren't sure what our next step was. Because when we looked at the paperwork to submit, it all says building permits and.
You would not be required, the only, there is a requirement that you do a Class 6 road waiver before the planning board is to give out a subdivision.
Okay.
So if you didn't do that as part of the subdivision process, then you really should do it for that subdivision.
So not for the part, the large parcel, not for the entire parcel?
Correct.
Have to be its own?
Correct.
So we could follow similar, um, so on this, did you upgrade? Was some recommendations from the road agent? Could they still follow those same recommendations?
It depends on the road agent. Typically.
And on here, it does state.
The board, the board of selectmen are the ones that have the final say on it.
Okay.
They take input from the planning board, conservation, uh, road agent, highway department, fire department.
And then there's also these three maps that show it is Class 6 that was submitted with that paperwork.
Different road agent.
It's a different road agent, it's, it's, this was two thousand seventeen, it's two thousand twenty-four now, so, um, I, I guess in, again, any, any of these road waivers get sent to the various boards and committees and departments for their input. And then the selectmen base their decision on input from those.
So if we show you the paperwork that we completed, could you tell us which ones we actually really need to?
Absolutely, I, I can help you out with that.
That would be great.
So the other question is, what do you guys deem as before I go any further with?
Because we have some people saying it's private, and yet everything we found is Class 6.
And it was never finished from all the paper we got from the state. It was submitted, but it was never signed off on the court at the date time that it was supposed to be. So it never got finished. We have all that document. We have it right there where it still says Class 6, I mean, right here.
And even in the road waiver, I mean, the.
The bottom of the paper says any move that they deemed that was not finished being private, they can fall back on being a Class 6. Because the, because the road agent went out with us, and he goes, you're better off going out this end, which is the south end. I was like, well, we're kind of having an issue right now. He said, no.
When you say the road agent, you mean our current road agent?
Yes.
What time, what year in time we're talking about?
Yeah, I mean.
Nice, now that's what I'm saying, John, okay.
So John said you're better off going out the south end, and he goes, read the bottom paragraph right here. It's still a Class 6 road, he's assuming. So this is where I need to know before I have to figure out the next step. If it is, I have my next, I'm good.
Understood.
And we always wanted to join South Path anyways, not South Path, but the Road, Road Maintenance. We had written them all a letter, and they didn't want to do that, but now, now that's what brings all this to finding out, is it a Class 6 or is it not? So.
And we just, each other also advise the attorney as to what your stance is on it, whether it is Class 6 or whether it's private, because we've had, there's so many different people saying different things, yet everything we find on paper shows Class 6. So that's where we're at a conundrum.
I think that's the nubbin of the whole argument, is what, what actually is it? I couldn't sit here and say at, at, right here at this moment that I know, but I find it really helpful to have all the information that you just gave us, and I think we have a bunch of other sources to look at, so.
And even that upgrade, um, the, the application for upgrade of the road shows, all the maps there show Class 6 as well. So I thought, yeah, that's, that's kind of interesting as well.
And this is, so you gave us this tonight, what else do you have there, Ken?
This is the, uh, copy of the road upgrade, uh, road upgrade agreement from two thousand seventeen and the road waiver.
And that's for the initial parcel?
Which, which I've never seen or read before, so can we get copies of that to see and read?
Sure.
Please understand, I really don't think I can sit here and digest this. Right, you're only that old, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But, um. Okay.
We appreciate you taking the time to share from that.
So I've got a suggestion, um, select board members, tell me what you think, which is, we need time to digest these documents.
Absolutely.
So, Kent and Beth, what do you think is a reasonable period of time to, to look these over? There may be more documents, get the talents available, you can certainly look for those.
Wait, let me see where we are in the world.
I'm thinking if we're getting on the agenda for next due, that would be just two weeks.
The third?
Correct.
Do we have? Yes.
Cal, do we have room on the third?
Yeah. I don't think the third's got anything.
You're the boss, you know, so, and you told me there was no room.
Oh, I don't think anyone's. That would be good, because this is a lot to digest, and as you say, we've got other, that is the, the crux of the art, of the issue.
Kent's.
Sadly enough.
I guess. Does the board want to take a drive down to look at Wyden Road at any point?
I, I do.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I would say certainly want to come out.
To see it.
If we can mark, how can we, I can put some kind of a cone or something, so you know where the, the last one is, coming from the south end? So you'll know there'd be like one lot before the cone, and it'll.
Or maybe there's a survey center.
No, the corner, the, the front corners will be set.
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
That would be helpful.
Still locked, person.
Their gate is still up?
Yes.
You can come in from my end if you would like.
Is it locked?
I say my end, but you can come in from the north.
You aren't there.
Open the south, no, it doesn't lock.
Because I don't think the gate locks.
No, you can open it.
Be locked correctly.
I think that's another.
That's another issue.
Yeah.
Wait, subject to, wait, subject to gates and bars? Yes, I would like to go out too, I don't think I've ever, I think I've been down Wyden Road once in my time. So yeah, the third, sounds like there's a little bit of time, and everything else that's on the calendar. Confused?
Good.
Not confused, yeah.
No, no, I think all good. Cal, you made a contact with them to schedule a time. Come back in.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so we've got, I've got everything here, oh, this has got the maps too.
But we're also going to look at what, uh, what the town is.
Oh, yeah, 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 I just meant to bring ours, to make sure I have all of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, folks?
I think that's, that's.
We appreciate your time very much, all of this, all of this.
Thanks, folks.
All right, thank you. Ken, I'm going to get this back to you, don't forget, this is a very extensive engineering report.
All right, and you move, promise? Oh yeah, actually, we can start on the website, so.
Yes.
So why don't we go back to that? So everybody's got this?
Are we going to rush up the papers from? I feel like she waved, yeah. Um, Megan, no, he's not able to make it?
We just found out, um, through the test.
Cal, did you get to, um, talk with Firehorse about their proprietary kind of?
Yes. That's, that's how I was able to, um, fill out all of this. I met with them on five fifteen last week, it was Wednesday.
Cal, with HAZ optimization, I see, would be charged hourly at a hundred and twenty-four dollars an hour, not lump sum.
Yes.
But I guess I'm, I'm a little confused as to how we get up to the ten thousand.
They estimate that, um, it would take about that much.
Okay.
Hourly work to get the features, um, that we've suggested.
Whereas Firehorse is just three equal payments?
Yes.
As guaranteed, so, but, I, I mean.
Yes, so if we, if, um, go with HAZ optimization and we use, we don't need as many hours, then it would be cheaper than ten thousand.
Yeah.
But if it turns out they need, need more time, then it would go over the ten thousand.
So I guess, what do we do then? Because if, if I remember, didn't we get ten thousand okay to tally?
Well, we would probably stop at the ten thousand and, um, maybe make another one for next year, or if it's like an extra hour, maybe it isn't, it might be allowable to put it towards the tech thing. Um, I might be able to finish whatever's not done by that point. I don't know.
Okay. Question, please. Um, are you going to be able to, could you prioritize what you absolutely have to have, in, as opposed to the nice to haves?
I already, I did that in the request for proposal that I sent out last November, so the absolutely have, have to have list, um, both of these vendors are able to cover that within the ten thousand dollars. We did the request for proposal back in November and December, because we wanted to make sure that ten thousand was reasonable before we did the Warren article at ten thirty. And also on here, which I will put online, um, with these minutes, but, um, the cost for the additional features, so the nice to haves, um, HAZ optimization estimates that they'd be able to do those likely, likely within five thousand dollars, and Firehorse estimates that they'd be able to do those nice to haves between twenty-five hundred and three thousand.
So is that in addition to the ten thousand?
Yes, and so that would be maybe next year, or, um, maybe in like bite-sized pieces, like once a quarter with the maintenance contract.
What was your opinion of their, um, the Firehorse creative era, their, their content management system? Because you were not at all sure, since it was proprietary, that.
Yes, so, um, when I met with them. Yes, so when I met with them last Wednesday, they did a demo for me. So I was able to see what it looks like and it looks fine, it looks functional. It looks like it's a little bit simpler than WordPress, but it is their proprietary stuff. I did, I was able to see even with their content management system, I can edit the code, which is kind of nice. And they build it custom, so most of this money is going towards the building the CMS. So they would make it so that it works for what we want to do. So managing our users, building pages.
Oh, they don't just have a proprietary CMS, they have one that.
They make a custom one.
They make it.
They make it just for us.
Oh.
So they have a base that they work on and then most of the work, I guess, is less about the building of the website and more about the building of the CMS. So that we can make the website and customize it going forward. And then on the second page, they also told me that they just started having a subscription one, so they've got.
The back page is just about Firehorse.
That's just about Firehorse. So that's comparing their subscription CMS to their standalone CMS. So the subscription one would be using one that they have hosted in their clouds. That would more resemble the WordPress option, which is what Has Optimization would do. So that would be something that they're updating constantly in the background. And we would be paying them a monthly, monthly or annual subscription, which is pretty equivalent to what we would do with WordPress. The standalone CMS is what they initially gave us the proposal for, because that's all they had back in December. And that one is something that would be like a little snapshot in time of CMS, of the CMS. So it would be whatever they make for us. And it would just stay kind of frozen in time unless they do updates. And I explained some of that in here about the pros and cons versus those two, those two different options. But the CMS.
Is there a way to compare the cost yearly for subscription versus standalone? $100 an hour for maintenance sounds like a lot, but if they're only doing an hour maintenance, no big deal.
Yes.
Which is 200 a month, so how would we compare those two?
So I don't really know how to compare those two. In that, in that box, I show that the total per year for the subscription base would be 2,400. For the standalone, it would be at the very least 420, is that true? That's on the first page.
Oh, I'm on the, okay, I was on the back side. Got it, thank you.
So on the first page in the third row, for the subscription, it would be 2,400 per year. For the standalone, just for the hosting, it would be 420. I don't know how much maintenance it would require per year.
Cal, what constitutes maintenance?
So maintenance would be applying patches and giving us new features, so.
So do we have any control over that though? If they, you walk in on a Monday morning and they say, oh, we have to do maintenance over the weekend, it's going to be $400?
No, the maintenance is only what we request. So even, so this is part of the pros and cons on that side, is that even if there was like a security patch, they would notify us to say, hey, there's an important security patch, would you like us to do this? And then we would have to say yes. And then we would pay them $100 an hour to apply the patch. So that's, that's part of the cons, I guess, of doing standalone one, is that they're not updating security patches automatically constantly. But we can still get them and they'll notify us right away if there is one. So I have no way of knowing how many patches per year to expect from them. I have no way of knowing how much, how many hours it would take for them to do a patch. Because it's custom software, it can be kind of hard to merge patches into custom software. Because you think it's, it's fine and then, but you don't know until you put it in that custom one.
Yeah.
Are they custom designing custom patches for the custom system?
Well, that's, they, I think they might, they might have, depending on what the patch is, they might have to do that.
Because that's, that has to.
Because if they use like a separate, if they, if they use like a new library to do a new feature that's just for us, and that specific library needs a security patch, then yes, it would be a custom security patch just for us.
Yeah, John, you had something. Who owns the code?
The town owns the code, either way.
Yes.
Um, which is the main thing, and that is the other difference
That's huge.
between the subscription and the standalone. So if we do the standalone, then we own that snapshot of the CMS. So we can take that and host it on our own.
Yes, yes.
We could edit the code and, you know, we could do everything in-house. But if we do the subscription, we don't own the CMS, but we still own the code. So if we did the subscription and we decided we don't like Firehorse anymore, we want to go with somebody else, then we can tell Firehorse, give us all the code, and they would be able to export all of it for us. Which is different from what we have with Civic Plus, because with Civic Plus, they cannot export it, they cannot give us anything. And that's why we're starting from scratch, because it doesn't, it doesn't work. But with, either way, Firehorse allows us to own the code.
And ours as well?
Yes, yeah. Where, Has Optimization would be done with WordPress and we would own, we'd own the code, we'd own the WordPress. So that was one of the must haves, and they both satisfied that must have.
Right. Do you have a feeling one way or the other? I mean, this is a, this is a, thank you for this, because this makes things clear from a numbers standpoint. But do you have a feeling as far as working with either of these groups, or which, with your expertise, which you feel would be a better fit for us?
I think they're both good options, because they're both small, local companies. We've had easy communication with both of the companies. So I wouldn't have any concerns with working with either of them. Based on their portfolios, they both seem equally qualified. Neither of them have worked with municipalities before, but they both have a substantial portfolio with pretty robust websites. So I think they would both be able to handle doing this.
Question?
Yes.
These are, this would be an annual contract?
They, yes.
I didn't see anything in here saying you want a three-year contract, or five-year contract, or one-year contract, or.
Right. Yeah, I guess it would be a, well, it'd be an initial contract for the initial work.
Right, so it's an initial work.
And then a maintenance contract after, and I guess, I guess, yeah, it would be a one-year, one-year contract after that. So we could, if we're ever unsatisfied with either of them, if, we're setting ourselves up so that would be very easy to move to somebody else if we needed to.
And it's not easier to move if you're using like Has, a WordPress base that's more familiar throughout the world versus Firehorse's specially constructed for us? I mean, we may have the code, but does that make it easier or less easy if we decide we don't want to work with them anymore?
It would be probably easier to move with WordPress, because they would just give us the credentials and then that's it. We have the WordPress account completely. So it's only a question of if we want to move out of WordPress into a different system.
Right, but as Beth said, WordPress has been around forever.
It, it has, and is there, um,
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember back to your initial proposal about why they were, why they were pressing for their own in-house.
So they, um.
What was the big selling point for their specially designed for us?
So.
Which box do I need to look at here?
Front page, um, they've row, four rows up from the bottom, security. So Has Optimization, WordPress and plugins would need to be carefully configured, but can be done securely. Whereas Firehorse Creative, the custom CMS doesn't use third-party code and it's developed in-house.
So they weren't saying it was more secure because of that, right?
Yes, and that is partially true, partially security through obscurity. Like if nobody's looking at it, then nobody is, is testing it and able to see where the faults are. Whereas everybody's looking at WordPress, but that is, everybody's looking at WordPress. So you have to make sure you've configured it exactly correctly and everybody is using things correctly because, and you're patching things consistently because everybody's looking at WordPress.
Yeah.
So my opinion is that they're both adequately secure for our purposes. Because there's also backup, both of them are offering, we can, we can back up the code. So my main concern with security for the website is that somebody hacks it and then like deletes the whole thing. Or like puts something root on the front page.
Would be bad.
Or tries to be like, oh, ransomware attack and says, we give us a million dollars or you can't get your website. And it's like, well, we'll have the backup of the code, so it might take a day or two, but we can get a backup online. So.
That's a, that's an excellent question, actually, how often, I mean, I know I've been Time Machine on all my systems, so they back up every 12 hours automatically. They both have that kind of feature?
I don't know how often the backup would be. It would depend, because the way that WordPress works and the way that their CMS works are very different. And they're both using different hosting systems, so I don't know the frequency, but it would be.
Well, certainly not like monthly.
No.
It would be weekly or every, or.
I would, I would make sure that it's weekly or daily.
Yeah, okay.
Ideally daily.
Daily would be great, but, you know, it would be nice, I mean, I'm not, you know, you've been very clear that Has is, or, is that?
Has.
Has. Has is owned by Logan and Logan is a friend and it's legal, but been very clear upfront with that whole thing.
I do not want to make this decision.
And no, no. It is also.
Oh, sorry.
Oh.
I have a question. Is Firehorse Steven Smith?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, we know personally if that helps.
Oh, oh. Do you give him thumbs up, or?
Yeah, he's a good guy, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. That's good to know.
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry, we love the peanut gallery. That was neat. Boy. And when can either start? When would you like to start? When do you have time to start with them?
I would love it if you guys made a decision tonight, so that I could contact them and start scheduling. I think that I'm going to be the logjam regardless of who we go with, because I need to get them the content, so like the pictures and the text. Most of it they can take from the website right now as it is, because, you know, like the description of the board of selection, it probably should be updated, but for now, it's fine. So it's going to be getting them content and it's going to be getting meetings with me and I don't, I'm always very busy.
You're very.
I'd like to get a decision tonight, so that we can start.
Um, one other question I would have about Just, is Has, just Logan or does Logan have a team?
Logan has a team. Uh, I believe they have three employees right now.
And Firehorse?
I don't. No, I know that it's a few people at least.
Joanna, you don't know, do you?
No, we just, we just know.
You just know them personally?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I know they're both small. Um, I don't know the size of Firehorse. I just didn't know if, if, you know, part of it is, you know, you're pressed for time. And if they have a slightly bigger organization that could, you know, really take care of a lot of the details that maybe if Logan's organization is smaller, that they might be relying on. Neither one of these will really be relying on you to do the work, just to consult and make sure it
Yeah.
suits the town's needs.
Yeah.
Okay, so it would be, I only ask you that, but I don't trust you doing the work, so I know what your schedule is.
Yeah, when I met with Firehorse last week, they were happy to hear that it was not a committee. They asked, oh, they asked if there was a committee, and I said, the committee is me.
That's good.
Very good.
I'm going to do the survey, I would like input, absolutely, but also for this, the committee is me.
Yeah.
Oh. I was going to say I need another drink and a diagram, I've got the diagram already, so thank you.
So I guess with Has, the $10,000 would be the ceiling. There's a possibility we would finish it under $10,000 for that, with Firehorse, it would be $10,000.
Correct.
Additional features, they're both kind of guesstimated by the looks of that?
Yes.
Cal, what do you think on plugins?
I think the plugins could potentially add up to, well, I really don't, I don't know, because some plugins are free, some plugins are like five bucks a month, some plugins are 20 bucks a month.
Yeah.
Um, without going, without actually starting the work and seeing it say, okay, this, and this, and this need these five plugins.
Right.
We don't actually know what those fees would be.
Yeah.
So it could be anywhere from like an extra 50 bucks a year to an extra 200 bucks a year.
Yeah.
But they, plugins are purchasable things that are already designed and usable, as opposed to if we need plugins from Firehorse, they would be building them for us, correct? Or do they have a?
Essentially, yeah, so if, so it'd be like, like a calendar feature. On WordPress, they would probably find a plugin created by some company out in the world. And we would purchase from that company the ability to use their calendar plugin. Whereas with Firehorse, the calendar plugin, I think that's actually part of the, the $10,000. And it wouldn't be a subscription thing, whereas plugins are likely to be a subscription thing, they're usually not one-time fees. But with Firehorse, it would be a one-time thing for them to develop the feature for us.
Understood.
So we would have a standard calendar and then that would just be ours and?
Yeah, and it would, if we needed updates, then that gets into the $100 per hour for maintenance.
Yeah.
This is harder than trying to decide because you look.
Give me any other problem. I don't see any sense in this at all.
In, in doing the website, or?
No, I don't see, I don't understand what it is we're talking about.
Oh, oh.
Kind of foreign language to me.
Well, they both, they both seem different, but similarly valuable, so.
It's a good problem to have, they're both good vendors.
Yeah.
So you're choosing between two bid options.
Yeah.
And it's kind of.
And Firehorse is located where?
Concord.
Oh, so no, again, if you needed to go, but you wouldn't need to go there very often if you needed to.
I probably never need to go there, but it's more of a, if I need to chase somebody down, they have an address that I could go to. Whereas compared to Civic Plus, which is
Right.
nebulous and.
Okay, so here's a, here's a, you didn't want to, you didn't want to weigh in, because Logan is a friend. But if you needed to really get cranky with somebody because things weren't happening in the way in which you might like the, or the timeline, is it easier to be crankier with Firehorse or with a friend?
I would leave my job.
Oh, okay, well then you, Ken.
Yes.
I would take the heat off of Cal.
And go for Firehorse?
For neither.
Oh, you would, you would take the heat off Cal for either way?
I would take the heat off.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If there was a problem.
Okay, right. Thank you. That's good to know. It's always nice to have the heavy.
Honestly, I think it's 50/50 from what I can see. But the only thing that for me tips the scales on paper as is the possibility that we might get away for under $10,000. I know we're kind of taking a chance, but with Firehorse, it's going to be $10,000.
Well, and the, and the the slight advantage that if we need to ever migrate it, if we ever don't want to use our website designer that, I mean, like if we don't want to use Firehorse, it might be more problematic to migrate everything.
Yeah.
The security issue doesn't bother me as much as I think the other companies that we quickly discount do or making it sound. The security issue doesn't bother me as much as I think the other companies that we quickly discount do or making it sound that, as you say, that WordPress is, you know, just ripe for the picking for security problems. As you say, everybody's looking at it to protect it and if they do it right, which we are assuming that Logan will.
Yeah.
Or you wouldn't, or you wouldn't have recommended Logan.
Yeah, and we're assuming also that I would double check and that we would maintain it. That's the thing, regardless, either way, you have to maintain it consistently and regularly. Or else it'll get outdated and then it'll become vulnerable. And that applies either way.
I'm thinking it's no bad thing to, um, have a Canterbury entity take care of our Canterbury website. Um, who might give us a little bit more for the dollar that, that Firehorse who doesn't know us would. Um, might think of things that Firehorse wouldn't because Logan's local. And talks to people who can easily say, I like this or I hate that or, you know, um, would be more able to hear input. I, I would, I would, for me, it tips it towards Haas. And, and with thanks for being very upfront about, um, knowing Logan. And I'm sure that will help too, uh, being able to work together.
Yeah.
Because an awful lot of work gets done sometimes, um, over the phone on a Saturday morning when you're having an issue. And perhaps you happen to be sitting down together, having a latte, I don't know. Um, that's, that's not very businesslike, but we all know that some business gets done. Anyway, I think if, if anyone else, um, in lack of any other opinion, I would, I would tip towards Haas for being local. Uh, and a possibility of being less expensive for the, um, probability that Logan would put more heart into it because it's cheap, because this is local. And, um, that would be my vote.
I'd say we're ready for a motion.
I make a motion, we go with Haas. Don't need to add anything to it or.
No, I think that, that covers.
I would second it.
All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for a very complete summary and investigation of all the possibilities.
Good night, John.
Thank you. Thank you, John. And I'm very glad that this is not the company that had the 75-page proposal.
Kevin, were you looking to talk to us or?
Uh, three quick, quick things.
Please.
One was just a follow-up on the HTC's discussion on the tree.
Oh, yeah.
That we recommended that.
I spoke with, uh, Passmont today and they're going to take it down and grind the stump.
Okay.
Uh, Unitel hesitated at the planting of a new tree. So I said, okay, then we'll figure out something else with that.
All right, so that was kind of our second thing, that the HTC would kind of like it if they were going to do it at the town somehow. By the way.
There was, isn't there one more tree? Weren't there three trees in the?
No, there's two trees there.
I know there's two trees that were used, wasn't there one more tree in the deal or in the conversation? I thought there was one more tree available.
I don't think so. The thought, the thought being that one of our, moving forward, one of the regulations we wanted to do is specifically about trees. And one of the stipulations a lot of times do is a replacement program. So, you know, we kind of set a price of.
Yeah. What do we think a new tree might cost?
Uh.
You bought the last one, right?
Yeah, I think.
Depends on how big you want the tree. I'll tell you a story about my cousin when we're.
They're not cheap now because of the pandemic. There's not a lot of mature nursery stock around.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, I know when we did the maple for, um, Bud up at Shaker Village, that was a two or two and a half inch caliber maple, sugar maple, and I think it was 550.
Okay.
So.
Oh, that's less than I would have thought.
Yeah, I mean, to have something that doesn't look like it's going to take another.
To, I mean, you need like this to grow, yeah.
Yeah, so it's similar to the ones that Gordon put out there.
Yeah, yeah.
To what those would be now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I was about to say.
Probably wouldn't find anything with any size less than 375 or 45.
Okay. We can find money, okay.
Does the H, HTC, um, going to present a plan about how we want to come up with a tree plan? You were just talking about coming up with.
We can talk with the cemetery folks. But I mean, really, you know, what we probably would be looking for is something that's native. You know, a lot of, yeah, things, uh, a lot of natives have kind of overlooked unique things. And all of a sudden, you know, everybody says, well, where are the sugar maples?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, didn't you just say that his, the HTC wants to come up with some sort of?
Yeah, procedures.
Procedure.
We have something when somebody comes and says, hey, I want to knock down the plane tree over at Yon's house. We go, well, if you want to, here's what you have.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what qualifies? Does that need to have? No.
Right.
But.
That sounds reasonable.
So that was one. Two was, uh, yeah.
Got to write things down.
I know, I know. And I was just talking with Lois just to make sure that we remember. Oh, um, the HTC would like to recommend in the select board that you elevate Harry Kinter to replace, uh, the resignation of Ginger the Planet. Go ahead.
So I just, I just emailed Lois back today. Harry Kinter is already a full member.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He did get it.
Mm-hmm.
He's already a full member.
He's already a full member. Yeah, I remember signing his appointments.
And you have Harry, you have myself.
I thought.
Jeff and.
And then Virginia is the only one, only other one. I just removed her today because of her resignation.
So isn't that six though?
One, two, three, four, and five. Anne, Harry, Jeffrey, Kevin, Lois. Lois is an alternate.
Lois is an alternate.
Yeah.
Five is the select board number. Okay. All right, so we're good there. And, uh, lastly, it was noted, not through any sort of official thing, but, um, there was quite a discussion about the library and the parking signs.
Oh, thank goodness.
What's done is done, but we kind of had hoped that we would at least spend approach. Because now we're being approached by sign, sign everywhere there's signs.
A lot of people have weighed in on, on the signs. Is there, is there a way to, I mean, it wouldn't be as much of a problem if they were shorter and on green sticks instead of the really tall silver.
Then they become a trend as, you know.
Hmm.
I guess I was, we were curious why now, what's different now? And I know that there's been issues with farmers market and people parking. Uh, but there's always been temporary signs that were put out there. And was that not working or was it just to have more signs in the center?
No, I, I think that discussion would have to go more towards Rachel. It didn't come from us to put the signs there. That was, that came from Rachel, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, and I know, I, I believe at least the librarians are not happy with the signs as they are either. Uh, but I would, I, and I don't know if it shows in the minutes anywhere why they asked for the signs. I think that might've been before I was here, but, um, I know that it's an issue more than just on farmer's market days. So they wanted something more, I believe they wanted something more, you know, we put out the signs on farmer's market days. But there's other times when one or two.
Yeah.
But I would, I think I would agree that those signs are kind of.
In your face.
Yeah.
Very much so. And they, they are, you know, you can still walk into them. But if you were lower than, you could trip over them.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Well, I'm not talking low like here. I mean, like this.
Or, you know, these five spaces and it's on one side or they're painted on the, I don't know. Like just people would come up and go, ah.
Well, the signs apparently also, um, uh, in conversation with Rachel is that they're much bigger and wordier than she would have wanted, but those are the ones that are available from the state. So that's what they thought.
They're already pre-printed.
They're, yeah, they're just made.
The patron parking there or something.
Correct, you know, the whole thing about the only during library hours for school.
Well, like I said, I mean, we're, we're not looking for something, but it was just, nobody knew the story. And so when you're talking with somebody and you're asking me how come?
Well, is there a way to safely make them, uh, more in keeping with a, the feel of the center and not quite so ugly?
I don't know. I suppose there could be with some thought. I don't know if money's already been spent on them and.
Well, I think even if they were shorter, I mean, if you pounded them in the ground another six inches, they would be better, but for me. But I'm sure it'd be, what do you think, Kevin?
Uh, I don't know. Can you put them into sleeves and just do them on the section of summer that the thing is running over there or?
Well, it's the other thing that comes back, right?
Well, yeah, flowers.
It's one more thing to work around.
Yep.
What do you mean putting it in sleeves?
Hole in the ground.
Oh, oh, oh.
Just have them seated on it.
Yeah.
It would shorten it up by half or roughly.
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, just bring it to the attention that it's already been brought to our attention. So bring that to your attention.
There's been a lot of conversation about it out in the parking lot.
Yeah. So anyways, those are the three things.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. And thank you for the website work. Awesome.
Thank you.
Good evening there.
And can we get word out on the tree coming down since that? Yes, I was gonna, once we've got confirmation of the outcome. Yeah. Cemetery, I know, is okay with that. It did, I did put that in the newsletter for June. Oh, good, okay. So that will be in the newsletter for June. Good. Do we have a tentative date? No. Okay. So just what we're. He wasn't sure. Yeah.
Well, and what happens to the, will there be good wood in that? The old beautiful wood or maybe?
I think the more important question is whether to plant that next tree and maintain it because it's going to be watered and all that. I think the fire department has actually helped on that score in the past, but I would say.
For planting and watering or just watering?
Watering.
How much water does it take? There'll be water in the trough on watered trees.
Dave would, Dave would come down with a forestry truck. Yeah. And depending on the weather, typically twice a week and, and put 20 or 30 gallons of water. Okay. And I think with our new part-time work there, each servant would come down.
Herbie?
Herbie, yeah.
Herbie would come down.
Herbie will come down.
And the forestry truck, we'll have Lenny and Lucy drive the forestry truck down.
I heard we haven't slapped that up yet.
We do, but we still enforce.
Okay.
So, so I would say that that's a very good idea and we'll run it.
I mean, I'd be nice if Ken would help with the planting. That way we know it's better.
Yeah.
Well, they'll be, if they stump it, there's a little hole there, right? So it's not going to be a problem.
No, they're going to grind it.
They're going to grind.
So there'll be wood chips in the ground.
But they'll be, they're grinded down.
They grind.
Or do they just grind it flat?
No, they grind down to the ground, I don't know, a foot maybe, something like that.
So can you plant in that? Can you plant in?
Don't, yeah, I don't know either. Not sure it's the best. I don't know, roots.
The other roots?
The new roots, I mean.
Oh, oh, oh.
They have to, you know, spread out.
Um, I will happily talk with, um, Donna to find out because I thought she, I'm pretty darn sure she said there was one more tree available. We have two that they planted and there was one more in the offing that they were talking about on that, from that same grant or whatever it was.
Well, just a suggestion on it then is that we don't have enough trees over there to shade the park a lot yet. And I thought that was what we were working towards.
Oh, all right.
I remember that discussion as well.
If we, we do take that tree away, we don't want to say that.
Yeah.
All right. No, I'd rather have the shade in the parking lot, selfishly. Farmers work, it says, yeah, we would like the shade, please.
All right, so what do we need to do with respect to the surface? Uh, permit was a no-show.
We sending people, Bill?
Well, it requires a, a special permit from the select for zoning. Any, any event over 200 people requires a special permit for zoning. And that's in our zoning ordinance. Yeah. So.
When is the event?
Harvey?
When is the event?
July 13th and 14th.
Okay. He's probably going to want to get a contract signed or something, isn't he?
He's already selling tickets.
He is already selling tickets.
So.
I can have our co-enforcement officer call him and tell him that unless he comes in to the June 3rd meeting, then he will be denied a permit.
I think that's.
And he will be found in, in violation of zoning. And that's a $250 fine for one day and it becomes 550 the next day. So it costs them less than a thousand bucks, but that would be it.
I can't imagine that it's a good thing to start racking up code enforcement, code violations in your town.
If this is in town, I would think that would not be the idea. Yeah. I don't know.
Uh, if he called up and said, oops, sorry, I had a sick cow, that's one thing, but, um.
No contact, Cal, I assume from him tonight, so.
Hey, I don't have his phone number, so.
I called him, I called him, left a message on the number down there. Yeah. And plus said, please call me back. He didn't respond. I don't know. There's no, it's not like you emailed him. You can get on their Facebook page to contact with them and I didn't. I called and left a message on their voicemail down there.
I would say if Joel's willing to go on down, um, and you can't get them, you've tried other ways and you can't, uh, that's not a bad way to go about it and had the opportunity to get his, he needs a permit signed. June 3rd is still in plenty of time, yeah.
Should be, yeah. Joanna, you guys weren't looking to speak with us, just observing or? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You just want to fly, fly your drone around inside?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Anything else, Kevin? Yeah, so you have a few more things.
All righty.
Um, let's see.
What were those?
Uh, this will be, well, I guess it's older, this big thing that has, has to do with a letter, the, um, waiting to know requests we see. The gentleman, Harvey Lane. Yeah, I emailed you, um. I did see. The response that we sent him. Yeah. And then he came in last Thursday and brought this. Yeah. And this, he tried to transmit it via email, but for whatever reason it didn't make it through. He brought this. I sent this along with a copy of our response to our attorney and asked if we were doing something wrong. Yeah. And they said the only thing that we might do in our future responses would be to add a date. Okay. And it can be an estimated date. Yeah. It can be two weeks out or whatever and it'll take us just by time to get the paperwork together. Yeah.
But Mr. Weinseck's claiming that we didn't appropriately respond.
That we did not respond is, is not correct.
Is not correct because, you know, the.
I didn't know if you wanted to respond to the second letter or not. Um, and I, my only thought would be that per the RSA, we did abide by the law. And, um, you know, we're, we're, I, I, I would just say that, just a short, two sentence, you know, or not.
You read that second one, did he?
We paid him 700 bucks already, didn't we?
We did, we did. I thought it was, using his words, very disingenuous of him to write something like this. Criticizing the attempts of our, uh, that, that our staff has made to satisfy his waiting to know request. That's the type of person he is. Um, he's very, apparently has a very large ego and it sounds like it was bruised a little bit, so.
I don't think it's any bad thing to respond quietly and succinctly. And we did that.
He does watch these videos.
Yeah, okay. But I think a response is, is not a bad thought.
It's up to you guys. I, I certainly was.
But I, I could, you know.
I was certainly not very happy when I first saw the letter, but I, I, I sometimes think that responding just causes more discontent. But I don't, I don't know.
That's true too.
My feeling is we've, we've responded within the, um, five minutes time period required by the RSA. Yeah. I think we did it that. Okay. That's, I.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. I know what you're saying.
I don't want to battle it out.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, no, that's, that's fine.
That's my, that's my feelings.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay, uh, let's see. The next is, uh, y'all got a copy of the profit loss?
Yeah.
Y'all?
We have some, we have some issues with the budget.
Ah, alright, where is?
Uh, mainly our K E.
Legal piece?
Yes. That would be, I guess it would be a pop of each.
It's 4153?
One, two, three, four. Yes, yes.
General Minister?
Yep, General Minister. 4153 is the, is the budget line. As you can see, we are 98.5% spent.
The budget.
We budgeted $10,000. The bill for our legal counsel for the month of April was over $5,000 and $4,300 of that was for planning board. And I saw that there was another, um, another email from the planning board chair that he had talked to counsel again just recently. I don't know what to say at this point. And we're talking about paying our attorney four hours to come out with a wait-to-know.
Yeah.
$260 an hour. Every day. And now there was a question about why Logan, my thought would be that that would be a question for our counsel.
Yep.
Yeah, I would think the essence of that issue is a legal question, so.
I would say so. Alright, I mean, certainly we, it's a bottom-line budget, but I, you know, we're, we're nine and six months into the budget and we're already, we're already looking at some, some issues. I think at the very least, it would be some kind of discussion with our department heads and boards and committees that the, we have to really pay attention to our budget this year. And if there's any places that they can save, then at least you start looking at it.
I think Luke is here.
Honestly, at this point, Luke is 45 minutes late. I've got an eight o'clock meeting.
Alright.
I do, Luke, you're 45 minutes late.
I realize that, I apologize.
We do not have time to speak.
Okay.
So you'll have to make another appointment. June 3rd is our next select board meeting. You must, listen to me, you must meet with us. I can't stress that enough.
Your event requires a special permit from the selectmen.
Yeah.
Uh, so you can't have it until you get that.
Okay.
Okay?
More you can't say right now?
No, you're, you're 45 minutes late, we're just about to adjourn.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Yep.
Thanks.
So, I guess at this point, like I said, I'm gonna send something out to the department heads, but I'd also like to send something out to the boards and committees about their budgets and please, if there's any way that you can start saving money, please.
Yep.
And I don't understand actually the ability for anyone to call counsel? Is it just the land use boards, the calls that go to counsel? Do they need to be approved? Can they just happen? Do they have a budget? Does each committee that has the ability to call have a budget for that?
Historically, the land use boards, ZDA, planning board.
Conservation?
Yeah.
Which is.
Conservation and even the HCC have been, I guess, given the ability to contact the attorney if needed, has never been a problem in the past. There was one instance several years ago where the planning board had to hire a different attorney because it was with, there was an issue with a neighboring town and their town used the same attorney as ours. And the board of selectmen at the time for Canterbury said, "Okay, but you only have this much money to spend." So. I, and, and again, you guys have control of the budget and you can say to the planning board, to the boards, that any communication with legal has to go through the town office. Be approved, be approved by, by either myself or you guys.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it seems, it seems as if one, if one board is really spending the bulk of the legal expenses, at least in April, there should be at least some ability to say, "Are these reasonable requests of our attorney?" At this point, they, they seem unreasonable, are they or not, I don't know, but it seems like there might be many questions that wouldn't have to go to legal for a variety of reasons. And again, if you have the ability to check and have it go through you and say, you know, I think if it's very easy to just pick up your phone and call a lawyer and ask questions
Yes.
and, and conversations get long and money gets spent, then it's just easy.
Yeah.
If it's not so easy, you know, we, at times, we will still need that legal advice, but maybe not as much.
Yeah, okay.
I would, I would concur. And that would be for, where, where else? I mean, it seems like a lot of our conversations as of late, everything is, "I need to check with counsel." I mean, from, from us too, so.
Absolutely. And our portion of the $5,000, it was $5200 bill or $15, I got $5200s. So they spent, we, we, myself, communicating with our attorneys, it was less than $1,000. All of the communications that we did.
Which sounded, which were a lot.
Considerable.
Yeah.
Considerably more than normal.
Yeah, yeah.
That was less than $1,000, so.
And looking forward to the conversations that we will be having about Wyven Road and other issues in town? If we blow right past this budget, how do we, how do we address that?
Again, it's a bottom-line budget and we would have to look at lines with the department heads and other committees and say, "That money that you thought you had, you don't have anymore." Yeah, because I, we typically, we typically do not overscribe our budget. Our, our, our budget, the town budget typically is, is underspent by a pretty good cushion.
Okay.
But again, it depends on what's gonna happen, so.
Well, legal, as you know, you throw a cushion pretty darn fast.
Yeah.
So. Do we need to make a motion to say that?
No, no, I can, I will contact the boards and committees and then I'll draft the policy that says any legal consideration should be at least run by the town administrator and office.
I mean, that makes sense on all kinds of levels because, you know, then you know what their questions and concerns are as opposed to just quietly asking things in the.
And not, and, and we are not, communications between the attorney and the planning board are confidential even from you.
Yeah.
Same thing with, with the ZDA, we need to talk with them all the time. That's confidential with that board, but we can get adjusted on the question or whatever.
So they took the, the call through the.
If they, if they, if, if there was an issue that the planning board wanted to talk to legal about, if they wanted to run it by me and say, "Hey, we got a question about our zoning ordinance, so-and-so, whatever." It has to do with an application, then I think that would be something that need be approved, you know.
At that point, would you say, "Okay, call, who's this?"
It's request after request after request for the same type of question, then it's like, well, how many times do we need to go to the web?
Yeah.
I guess it's a square.
But also, if they're calling to ask about their issue with X, Y, and Z, they just get permission to call and then they make their own call or do you?
Yeah, they would, they would, they would contact the attorney.
But get permission first?
Yeah.
Okay. And our attorney would know that upfront, so he wouldn't just want to pick up a call? Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
But I'd appreciate it.
Yes, one more thing, but we need to go into executive session for it.
Okay.